Welcome, welcome to the St. Charles County Council meeting. I would like to, excuse me, I guess. There we go. Thank you. Welcome to the St. Charles County Council meeting. I'd like to introduce Reverend Renita Lambkin from St. John's AME Church who will provide the invocation, and Councilmember John White will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
God of grace and God of glory on your people, pour your power. God, we thank you for these who give themselves to the service of your people. As they deliberate and make decisions, God, we pray for their wisdom, we pray for direction and guidance, that they will be a voice for the voiceless, that your power will rest upon them, that the words of their mouth and the meditations of their heart will be acceptable in your sight. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
First on the agenda for tonight is a public hearing on traffic regulations. Is there anyone here to speak on any traffic regulations? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on traffic regulations. Okay. Next is the public comment section of our meeting. We'll allow speakers to speak on any topic. Please remember that once we do open up a topic, we'll have three speakers, four, and three speakers opposed or the other side of the issue. Please limit your time to three minutes, and remember to fill out a speaker's card. Okay? Public comments. Feel free.
I'm here.
No, you come on up to the, yeah, you get a chance to, you know, you get a chance to get right up here in front.
I just, my name is John Weber. I live in St. Peters, 22 Greed Ose Court. I'm thrilled to see that you guys are considering a resolution to go to the State House Legislature in support of auditing the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve has encumbered our country with over $16 billion worth of debt through loans and bailouts. They continue to refuse to announce their plans, their emergency funding plans. This, if we allow them to continue in such secrecy, it just leads to continued abuse, corruption, inflation, and a lower standard of living for every American. The Federal Reserve Transparency Act would, for the first time in its 100-year history, require the Federal Reserve system of private corporation to explain to Congress and the American people how they're spending our money. So I would urge you to fully support this resolution for a full audit and disclosure of the Federal Reserve system. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone that would be opposed to this particular resolution? Okay, that's fine. We'll have another.
Good evening, members of the council. I am not in opposition to this, by the way. My name is Joe Wetter, and I live in St. Charles County, just right up the street on West Adams. I'm also a member of the St. Charles County Liberty Project. I'm standing here in front of you tonight to, in hopes that you will pass Councilman Brazel's resolution that's in support of State Representative Paul Curtman's House resolution that says that Missouri wants to see a full audit of the Federal Reserve. There's already a bill that has passed through Congress, and it's sitting in the Senate. And what this is going to do is just say Missouri supports a full audit of it. And then by you guys saying that you're going to support it, saying that St. Charles County supports it as well. We live in, we're living in dire economic times right now. You can't turn on the TV or pick up a newspaper without seeing that unemployment is 8%. Food prices are on the rise, and the cost of living is just steady increasing, you know, throughout the years. I believe, like many others, that the Federal Reserve is the perpetrator of this economic instability. Article 1, Section 8 of the United States Constitution states the federal government has the power to quote, "coin money, regulate the value thereof of foreign coin, and to fix the standard and weights and measures," unquote. In 1913, 100 years ago this December, Congress yielded its power to regulate the value of our money over to a private banking cartel, that is, the Federal Reserve. The American citizens were told that the Fed would curb inflation, it would stabilize our economy, and stop recessions. But all you have to do is open a history book, and you can see throughout the time that it's existed, that their claims have fallen flat on their faces. We've had the Depression in 1921, we had the Great Depression in 1929 that lasted through the advent of World War II, we had the recession of 1953, the recession of 1957, we had the stagflation of the early 70s, and we had the NASDAQ bubble, its bust, and then, which led to the inflation of the housing bubble and its subsequent bust. So if the Federal Reserve is around to protect the economy from all this instability, why do we have it? The Austrian School of Economics teaches us that we had this economic instability because of the Federal Reserve's actions. Because it has a legal monopoly to print money, it can expand credit at will, it can artificially drive down the interest rates. When the interest rates are artificially pushed down, malinvestment is encouraged in the private sector. This distortion of the interest rate is simply fueled by inflation, not real demand in the market. So when this happens, the boom starts, and then when the inflation stops, a bust happens and depression ensues with what we have going on right now.
Can we ask you to please wrap up your three minutes?
Yeah, sorry, okay, so, in the 100 years, as the previous gentleman said, the Federal Reserve has never had a full audit. There was a partial audit in 2011 that revealed that the Fed, during the banking crisis in 2008, lent out, or gave out $16 trillion, trillion with a T, to failing banks and corporations here and then foreign central banks. So it's because of this secrecy and its inherent nature to create depressions that we encourage you to please support Councilman Brazel's resolution, to support Paul Curtman's resolution to audit the Fed. Thank you very much.
Is there any other speakers on this topic? Seeing none, we'll open it up to any other topic for public comments. Anybody else have any? Mr. Knopf?
Thank you, members of the county council. Good evening. $1 million is a great deal of money for this council to spend, and allow its election director to spend money on something that is not needed, not prove that it's needed, and you haven't asked the witnesses who are in the trenches on a day-to-day basis running this equipment. This expenditure has not been proved for need by Mr. Krismer for seven-and-a-half-year-old election equipment. Lies are being told that the machines were ruined and rained on. That's just not the case. Mr. Krismer is trying to blame the administration because of a leak in a roof. That roof was replaced by the Facilities Department, and it had been repaired. I ask and I beg each one of you members of the county council to bring forth witnesses of the county election authority who are the employees who know the true facts in this There's a court case now before this county, and it's Court Case 111-CV-0895. And I talked about where Mr. Krismer is going above and beyond the customary 5% charge of reimbursement, or charging the political subdivisions of our county. That court case now in our circuit court that's being tried by a Lincoln County judge estimates $650,000 that Mr. Krismer is illegally and wrongfully charging our political subdivisions. I will ask next month each and every mayor of each and every village, town, and city in our county to join in a class action lawsuit to bring against Mr. Krismer to make sure that every penny and every dime of that that's going towards this $1 million machines is paid back to the election, to the political subdivisions. Your own county auditor on the initiative of a county council member stated on January 25th that Mr. Krismer has overcharged the political subdivisions to conduct elections That's absurd. Before we do a federal audit reserve, we need to, we need to bring our own house into compliance. And I'm calling on this county council to call for a county audit of the entire election authority finances. We need to clean up our own house and our own election authority before the Federal Our Home Rule County Charter, County Charter for the County Council, Section 2.531, states, "Establish procedures for the conduct of investigations by the county council or any of its committees of any question or matter on which the county may be applicable law to take action, including but not by way of limitation, the power to issue subpoenas for witnesses, and subpoena deuces tectum for books, records, and documents, provide penalties for failure to answer any subpoena or subpoena deuces tectum, provide for the services said subpoenas or subpoenas by any officer charged with the service of process, subpoena witnesses, and order of production of books and paper relating to any subject matter within its jurisdiction." You need to do your diligence and make sure that the taxpayer is being taken care of here and not the lone word of an election authority director that's being sued 15 times in County Circuit Court. The county may call upon the appropriate officer to execute its process and to deal with people who refuse to pay, so it's a fair process. There's people at the election authority that you need to bring forward in this matter that know what the true story is and that these machines that we currently have are serving the voters in fine fashion. There are the Voting System Supervisor for the Republican Party, the Voting System Supervisor for the Democratic Party, the Election Assistant at the Election Authority, and there's five or six program assistants that deal with these machines, and I empower this council to use its subpoena powers and bring forth witnesses so we can get down to the crux and the real matter here. Let's get the true and correct facts before we go spending a million dollars of taxpayer money, and then another six years, Mr. Krismer wants another million dollars for machines. You need to audit the finances. You need to look at all the lawsuits that are being pinned against the election authority. You need to look at the warranty that still hasn't been answered for these machines. That's why we're in this process seven years later with machines that we spent over a million dollars then. You need to look at the service issues that still haven't been answered, and what is the longevity of these machines? Are we going to be in the same predicament six or seven years because we want to buy a Cadillac instead of being happy with our medium-sized car that can get us by for the next four or five years? This council needs to step up to the plate and use its appropriate and fiduciary responsibility to the 400,000 residents of our county with transparency and openness, and let's get the information, the facts, right. So I appreciate the council listening to me, and I think before you make such a big decision, that you need to get the facts and the people in the trenches and not a political elected official who wants to take care of his buddy with a million-dollar contract. Thank you.
Were there any other comments on this particular issue? Any comments on any other issue? Okay, public comment section of the meeting is now closed. Next on the agenda is an oral report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Vicki Heisman to give you a five- or 10-minute update on the bills that we're tracking in Jefferson City.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll try to make it closer to five in there.
Okay.
We are keeping in close contact with the folks working for us up in Jefferson City. Do you generally have a lot of things on the play compared to offense? And certainly, there are some contentious proposals affecting the county this session, and those would include several bills, actually, there's more than one, that would restrict the council's ability to receive legal advice from its attorneys in a closed meeting. They also would assess a fine and mandatory attorney fee awards against a public body or official for making even the slightest unintentional mistake in following all the requirements of the state sunshine law. And they would allow a court to avoid any actions taken in any public meeting, even for a minor technical violation. There's also a bill that would set up a funding scheme to select, excuse me, to collect an extra fee from people in St. Charles County that file civil lawsuits, and that money would increase, be used to increase the salaries of sheriffs in other counties. This is just like the same sort of a program that was passed back in 2008 that now takes an extra fee collected by our deputies for serving legal papers and uses those funds primarily to increase the salaries for deputies in other counties. Another bill that is alarming, and Councilman Cronin brought that to my attention as well, we'd already seen that, it's called the Uniform Wireless Communications Infrastructure Deployment Act. And that is an industry proposal, and what this would basically do is gut our local zoning regulation over wireless communication facilities. It includes provisions that exceed current FCC regulations, it lacks necessary flexibility, shifts costs, and even would allow the industry to force, excuse me, force a sale or lease of public land for its own benefit. We are also making efforts to either amend or protect our language in a handful of other bills that could undermine the provisions in our own county charter. These relate to our county budget process, our county municipal court, the use of our county facilities, and the county's ability to hold retainage on public work contracts. We're also keeping our eye on a new proposal for 911 funding, so that it doesn't become another type of a program that takes local funds and sends them out to other communities. This proposal would give the counties in the state the ability, if the county desired, to ask the voters to, excuse me, to put a fee on your cell phones, on the cell phones of the residents in the county, and that would be used to support the 911 services. It would also allow the General Assembly to establish a separate fee that would go on the sales of prepaid wireless services in the state. And that particular fund, then, would be used for grants and loans to counties who were establishing their 911 services or upgrading those. We're also working on supporting passage of some key legislation, and those include a tax increment financing reform bill. This has been filed by Representative Kurt Barr, one of our state delegation members. Nine of our other delegation members signed on to that bill, along with 21 other cosponsors. The bill would allow a TIF commission decision opposing a TIF to be overridden in our county, as well as in St. Louis County and Jefferson County, only if the governing bodies of each affected taxing districts would pass a resolution in support of that TIF. While it is impressive, you may think that there are 30 cosponsors to that bill, there has really been a heavy opposition to any kind of TIF reform in the State House, so it is, it is a struggle. We also are trying to encourage some revisions made to that Deputy Sheriff Salary Supplementation Fund. And St. Louis County Executive Dooley, along with Mayor Slay, joined efforts with county, with our county executive to gain support for changing this program to more fairly distribute those fees that are collected. The suggested proposal would keep one half of the fees collected in the county where they are collected for their law enforcement officers, and then direct the state treasurer to distribute the other half of the fee pro rata among all the eligible officers in the state. We also are supporting an effort to send additional excess traffic fine revenues to our schools and assess a significant penalty to local governments for noncompliance. Local governments would be required to remit to the state for distribution to schools any traffic fine collections, including fines for red light camera violations and automated speed enforcement systems that exceed 20% of their general revenue. There is currently a law in the state to require communities to give over more than 35% of their revenue if they collect that much in traffic fines, but it is not well enforced. There isn't a stiff penalty, and this would look to deal with that issue. In addition, the county executive has joined colleagues in our region in supporting measures to bring amateur sporting events into the community, increase international cargo coming in and out of Lambert Airport, and to get our building trades back to work by encouraging sales of new homes. Lastly, the state budget process is something we always watch very closely, particularly as we've been experiencing decreases in state funding over the last few years. The state reimbursement for our property reassessments, that's been cut at least twice. And legislation was passed last year that allows the state parole and probation violators to be sent to our county jails for short stints, and the state is only paying about 1/3 of the cost of that service. So we are watching that carefully. We're watching, too, that Health Department funding has been decreasing at the state level. We are pleased, though, this year that we do have Senator Root back on the Appropriations Committee, so that's beneficial, and several of our State House members are on some of the subcommittees for the budget. If you have any questions on bills later, would like more information on something, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Very well done. Okay. All right. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove the vehicle purchases for discussion and also the parks and recreation item for discussion.
Okay. Yes, I have a second. Okay. Are there any other further items to be removed?
Right.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
So, yes.
Okay. All those in favor of opposing, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as modified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The modified consent agenda is approved. Mr. Cronin?
I had some discussions this week, I guess, with Mr. Schnur and also Joanne. Looking at the bids through the years and having discussions with Mr. Gross previously, I'm concerned that we're not spending enough money with local businesses in this county that support us as taxpayers, okay, into this county. The bids, the spreadsheet that I handed out tonight pretty much shows the low bid and what the low local bid and what finance is recommending, but some of the recommendations, I just have a little bit of issue with, I suppose. And particularly, if you look at the second item, it would be the dump trucks. Those dump trucks, the frames come in, and I believe that they take the chassis and put the beds on and get them prepped and ready to go, so they do provide a fair amount of work. The $498,000 bid was from a firm on 370 in St. Peters. The same bid truck in Illinois can be purchased for $492,000. So in that particular one, finance has recommended go to the low bid because they're $6,405 cheaper. $6,400 is a lot of money, but it's actually only 1.3% of this bid, and I think that, I hate to see those, that purchase go to Illinois, knowing that we have a company in our county that would benefit from that purchase. The next dump trucks bid is similar. The bid's $4,000 difference to keep the bid in St. Charles County versus what's actually 1.5% on that particular purchase. Finance did recommend some bidders be, that local bidders be awarded over the low bid. The first one, there was only $24 difference between the low local bid and St. Charles County, or, I'm sorry, the low bid and the St. Charles County low bid. But I think this isn't the time or place. We need to have a discussion about this. I've been reading St. Peters and O'Fallon, and today I got Wentzville's local ordinance coming, and I think we need to have a little bit better discussion about trying to keep the money in this county. Employers in this county that we spend our money with at county level hire people, they pay taxes, they pay property taxes, they expand their businesses in this county, and that's, it's just good business for the county to spend money in the county. In the past, when I had discussions with Mr. Gross, the magic number was always that we kept somewhere around 2%. Some of these are under 2%, some are a smidge over. The five Ford Fusions, the local dealer is $1,909 over the low bidder, about roughly a little less than $400 a car. That's 2.3%. Do we cut it at 2.3%? Do we, do we do an ordinance like O'Fallon's where, in Wentzville's where it's 10%, or like St. Peters that is a 5%? St. Peters will pay up to 5% to a maximum amount per vehicle. But my, you know, my goal in all of this is not to make things cumbersome, but I think we need to seriously consider spending more money in this county. On the parks and recreation, I had a meeting set up with Councilman White and Betty and Joanne, Betty Ann Kramer and Joanne Lakem about that particular purchase that's in my district, and it got canceled because of the weather. I think Betty and Joanne were agreeable that we could put that off until the next meeting, till we have time to meet, okay? So I'd like to pull that one off completely, and then I'd like to hear y'all's comments on the vehicle purchases.
Sure. Mike?
Thank you, and Joe, thanks actually for putting together this spreadsheet. Sometimes putting it in the right format really helps bring the point home, and thanks for doing that. Mr. Schnur and I had a conversation about this subject earlier this afternoon. I was asking him what the county's really policy was on it, and he said that they had one that, it's a kind of, like, to encourage local, but there wasn't anything that was formalized. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to put this on a work session and come up really what, what the policy should be, so that it is a straightforward process that finance would go through when evaluating the bids. I think that it has to be one that has a kind of a flexible or sliding scale. 2% on a $2 million contract is a lot of money. I don't know that it's really, we'd be doing our fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers if we just said it's an across-the-board even amount. And on the other end of the spectrum, 2% on a $10,000 contract really isn't enough either. So I think it needs to be one that has a higher percentage on the smaller contracts and something that decreases or caps out on the, on the larger contracts. I know that it really comes into play more on the, again, from what Mr. Schnur told me, on the vehicles, but the same thing would still apply on the street projects or some of the larger things that happen in the parks. So I guess the question that, looking at the spend on almost $1.5 million tonight, I guess the questions that I have are, how critical are these vehicles, or is there a time that we can, that we could hold off and come up with what the policy should be before we execute these contracts? Second question I have was, did we, in this process, and again, I don't know the county's processes yet, but do they look at the state bids at the same time on the police vehicles? I didn't see that information provided in what we were looking at. I know the city of St. Charles, a lot of times relies heavily on the, on the state bids, but we also, at the same time, compared them to our local bidders and then looked and to see who was, who really had the best prices. We found a lot of times on the, on the higher-end vehicles, the dump trucks and especially on the specialty trucks, that the state bid quite often was on the specialty trucks, that the state bid quite often was a cheaper one, a cheaper way to go, simply because there's not that many competitive bidders when we do it, just, you know, posting it here and, and looking at, at just the St. Louis metropolitan area. So I, you know, I guess I'd like to see us say, you know, before we pull the trigger on, on a million and a half bucks, does it make sense to, to slow down and take a look at it? And I absolutely agree with what the, where Joe started all this was, whenever we can, I think we need to use our, our local, local guys. Thank you.
Yes.
Chairman, could I ask Mr. Cronin a question?
Sure.
And Joanne has, has a point to make. Mr. Cronin, does Wentzville, is theirs at 10 percent now?
They, no, they, they said it's 10 percent, but they use a variety, they'd explain it to me, and then I asked for a copy, and their economic guy said they'd send it to me.
Okay.
But they have, they have a variety of weighting factors. They, the person gets more, more preference if they're in the city of Wentzville, they get a certain amount of points. If they're in the county and outside of Wentzville, they get a lot of points. If they're out, if they're in the state, they get points, and then the last guy in the pile is the guy out of state. So it's a pretty complicated system, way I understand, but apparently it works well with them. St. Peters is 5 percent with $1,000 per maximum, but there was some debate about whether that applied, for instance, on cars. Does that apply if it's, if it's a 10-car bid? Does that mean $1,000 per car? And I did have this discussion quite a few times with Mr. Gross, and he, he explained to me the, the issue of needing, finance needed the flexibility to, to make the right decisions. But I'm sorry, but I have a disagreement with Mr. Schnur about, I think this is important to the businesses of this county and the people that work in this county. I think we need to spend our money here.
And I appreciate that. I just want to check on Wentzville, because when we did do the research four or five years ago, what we found then was that Wentzville had a general policy but didn't have any, didn't have any numbers associated with it. So they maybe have gone back and done that now. You're right, St. Peters was five, 3 percent?
Five.
5 percent, $3,000?
It's 5 percent, $1,000 max.
$1,000 max, and St. Charles was 3 percent?
Yeah, with a, with a $5,000 max.
With a $5,000 max.
We wrestled with the same question, too. Was that per vehicle or, and then, and really where it comes into play mostly was on the vehicles. And then, the same question. I think that's a, a policy decision that, that needs to be made as to how these things, you know, what, what is fair without stifling competition at the same time.
Yeah. Let me just also add that when, when I get these things from Mr. Schnur, it's 99.9 percent of the time, it's just the low bid. We looked at three of these. We actually did change one. And the other two were, you know, it's two down here. There was two, well, there was a couple that, that were within the 2 percent, but the, they were over the $1,000. In fact, we went back to check Mr. Gross's notes to make sure that we were continuing to apply the same standards he did. This is, I mean, this is a good issue. You know, I, I agree we should have a, a work session and, and try to, you know, maybe there's something we all can agree on. If, if not, obviously, you, you guys have the final say on what the rules are. Joanne, I think, has one point, though, about what we need to do tonight.
Right. There's, there's a couple of points. Right now, there is actually something in the ordinance is about local preference, and it's just a general statement. So that would be the appropriate place to make the, if this council wants to make a policy decision about a specific number, that's where it really needs to go, is directly in the ordinance, especially under the fact that Missouri has a Free Trade Act provision in state law. So you have to be very careful to have a legal basis in your jurisdiction for that. In addition to that, we have a, a practical problem about the Tahos tonight. Tomorrow is the cutoff. Mr. McPherson, who's in charge of the fleet, informed us for the Tahoe purchases for this year. If we miss this one, we have to wait for the entire next model year. And part of this, although I think it's just one vehicle, the sheriff actually has a grant for that will not survive waiting that length of time. So, and in that particular instance, even on these numbers, I mean, it's a, it's a $7,600 per vehicle difference in the local bid versus the out-of-county bid. So I would really hope that you would go forward on the Tahos tonight. Can I finish? One sec.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And, you know, that if there are others that can wait, I'm not aware of it, I mean, Bob may be able to further inform us about that, but as they sit on the agenda tonight, they sort of either have to stay sitting on the agenda or be voted. We can't actually substitute out sitting here tonight on a consent agenda. So are there other vehicles you need to speak to?
Mr. Schnur?
There's, there's just four of the nine that are in any controversy. So we surely could pass five of the nine.
And that's the, the two different dump trucks and the Ford Fusions and the Explorers?
Yes.
This is, this is Mr. Cronin's analysis that I think you all have copies of. Am I said correct?
Yes.
Okay. What I did is I, I did a kind of secondary analysis of, of what Mr. Cronin laid out here, and I'd, I'd like to point out several things. First off, the items out here that are on the right-hand side that are mentioned local are, are already being bid to the local vendor, so I think those need to be approved tonight. Secondly, as, as Ms. Lakem has said, the Tahoe bid is on a deadline of tomorrow. The, to answer Mr. Klinghammer's question a little bit earlier, yes, we do look at the state bid. In fact, this is a state bid. It's through Don Brown Chevrolet. You're not going to beat that price anywhere, and, you know, that's just the way it is. So the Tahoe bid needs to be approved as well as the items that I've marked as local there. The remainder of the items, I, I just kind of broke down into, into two other groups, essentially. The, the dump trucks are, are kind of a class unto themselves, and of the dump trucks, we have, we have about $10,500 worth of additional cost on eight units, which is $1,310 a unit. And, you know, when we look at these bids, we're, we're very mindful at, at our level, and then, as the county executive has said, at his level as well, of local vendor. And if we have an opportunity to do that, we, we like to do that. But at the end of the day, local vendor preference is a conscious decision to spend more for a product that you can get elsewhere. Our policy is in our, our local vendor preference policy is in our purchasing policy now by ordinance. And it is, as I told Mr. Klinghammer today, it's, it's very broad, because you can't really legislate to every variable and, and just as you guys were saying here a little bit earlier, does $1,000 apply per vehicle or does it apply? I mean, you can get down to that level, but you're, you're buying cars, you're buying office supplies, you're buying, umpteen different things in the course of a year, and, and how do you legislate that? So that becomes part of the problem here. As you buy different commodities, different dollar thresholds, I think, apply to local vendor preference, because in the area of vehicles, vehicles are a very low gross margin commodity, and they operate, dealers operate on a very low gross margin when it comes to their, to their vehicle sales. So therefore, a, a very small portion of the sale price of a vehicle actually resides and stays in the local community when it's all said and done, and the dealer pays for the car. That's why we, we have for, for passenger cars stuck to a 2 percent kind of threshold. Anything more than 2 percent, we think we're paying too much for, for passenger vehicles. When you get into dump trucks and that sort of thing, and here we've got five dump trucks for $6,400 more, three dump trucks for $4,000 more, we just thought that that was too much, an average of $1,310 per vehicle. So we went through that exercise, and we just thought that that was just too much to pay on a per-vehicle basis for the fact that none of our local vendors were as competitive. On the last two items there that I have in this box, that the Ford Fusions and the Ford Explorers, the four-wheel drives, they, they crept over the 2 percent, not by a whole lot, but of the nine cars we're buying, it's $4,459. It's about 500 bucks a car more that we're consciously paying. So we did not agree that the local vendor preference should apply there. We did, as Mr. Cronin has mentioned here in his, in his exhibit, that we did award local vendor preference on a couple of these, and we're happy to do that. But as far as tonight's action is concerned, I would ask that you guys do approve the Tahos and any of these items that are marked local here. If you want to hold up on the, on the dump truck bid, I, I'm not aware of any real time deadline on that, nor in my conversation with Mr. McPherson this evening, I don't think there's a time deadline on the Fusions. But the facts are as they are, and unless you want to rebid these things, I, I think that, that it's our opinion that, that the prices that, that were offered locally for the, the dump trucks and the Ford Explorer and Fusions was too much to pay on a per-vehicle basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a comment? I think the suggestion of having a work session on this is, is a wise move. I'd just like to point out that prior to coming back to work for the county, I spent some 20 years working in the private sector for companies that largely did business with local governments and, and provided services through bidding processes to the local governments. And I can tell you that when I'm bidding on services or a product in the community where I have my office, I want there to be a local bidding preference. If I'm bidding on one outside of that, I don't want there to have a, a local bidding preference. And I can guarantee you, there's more of those than what there are the ones in my own community. So I think you want to be a little careful what you, what sort of requirements you put on that, because the more this sort of thing proliferates, the more, the fewer opportunities private sector has to actually compete. Thank you.
Mr. Cronin?
If we pull off the dump trucks, the Fusions and the Explorers, will that create any hardship at all, Bob? Can, can you wait on those for a work session?
Far as I know, we can't.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve all but those four, if that's acceptable, and, and then, and then schedule a work session down to talk, as soon as possible, to schedule, to talk about the other four.
Okay. So we have a, a motion to accept the consent agenda minus, would you like to repeat that?
We'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda for vehicles bid with exception of the two dump truck bids, the Ford Fusion bid and the Ford Explorer bid.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to run people through this, so if it's, I will go ahead and take the time to get some other local vehicle preference ordinances in the surrounding communities and get those to council members to look over prior to the work session.
Okay. Yes. Yes. The, it's, it's my understanding that we should, can, you know, keep the park issue off the agenda?
It's a, it's a, it's an improvement in my district, and I think Joanne and, and Ms. Betty Ann Kramer also agreed that we could, would be, there's plenty of time. It's a, it's a water feature in a park that's, and it's the middle of winter, so we have some time. I'd like to discuss that with them first.
Okay, so that, that item still remains off?
Yes, sir.
Consent. All right. Okay, next on the docket is Resolution 13-02.
Resolution 13-02, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution in support of Missouri says audit the Federal Reserve.
I don't know. You know, the comments to be made on this, for me, it's pretty obvious that the county council has its, the auditor in the county is under the discretion of the county council, and we audit every department, there's a part, pretty much once a month, a department gets audited, so we do our due diligence. It's our obligation to the taxpayers, and this makes complete sense to me. I, I hope by us doing some sort of resolution that it puts a little bit of influence towards Chef City, and then Chef City sends a little bit of influence to the federal government, but you just never know. But I think it's a well-worth resolution. I hope the council supports it.
Any other comments?
A resolution in support of Missouri says audit the Federal Reserve. Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
No.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is bills for final passage. Bill number 3943, please.
Bill number 3943, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with community council of St. Charles County for professional services to assist St. Charles County in community development block grant, CDBG, consolidated planning and reporting, and to assist St. Charles County's Community Assistance Board in awarding grants to agencies that address homelessness in the county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Donna and I received a, a request from Jennifer George, that she'd been contacted by the community council, and they asked that you all table this, because they haven't had a chance to talk to their board about the contract terms yet. And so they asked that it be tabled if the council was willing.
Okay. entertain a motion to table Bill?
So, yeah.
Second. Okay. We have a, a motion and a second to table Bill number 3943. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is Bill number 3944.
Bill number 3944, an ordinance vacating part of an unnamed alley in defiance.
Any questions or comments on Bill 3944? Hearing none? Let's call the roll.
An ordinance vacating part of an unnamed alley in defiance. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Next is Bill number 3945.
Bill number 3945, an ordinance amending section 405.080B of the Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, to prohibit manufactured mobile homes within residential plats in the A agricultural zoning district.
Questions or comments? I believe this is Mr. Cronin's bill.
Yes. Correct? This basically just prevents folks from putting a mobile home or manufactured home on a lot in a platted subdivision in St. Charles County. Doesn't mean you can't put one on, on a farm or put one on his farm. It means that agriculturally zoned areas of St. Charles County that have subdivisions and are some in the older part of the county, where there's subdivisions full of single-family homes, someone can't move a mobile home and manufactured home in there. This actually became as a request of folks in my district in an older subdivision on Highway P that just recently got a new DID district and, and subdivisions all getting fixed up, but there's some vacant homes, or vacant lots on the place, and there were some folks wanting to move rental mobile homes in. So speaking with Mr. Anthony helped me draft this, and it should create a little bit more protection for the folks that are in those subdivisions, yet it shouldn't be a restriction for anyone that truly lives in the country and wants to put a, a mobile or manufactured home on a piece of farmland in the county.
Any other questions?
It doesn't include non-man, it doesn't include manufactured, non-mobile homes.
That's a technical question I'd probably like to defer to Wayne, because we had this discussion a little bit, and he's much more knowledgeable than I am about it.
I don't know if I understand the question yet.
It's like a, a, like a kit home or a pre-manufactured home, it's put together on-site.
A mobile home is a, a description of a mobile home that was manufactured prior to 1978. A manufactured home is basically the same thing, except it was manufactured after 1978. So that's why we always use mobile homes and manufactured homes together, trying to describe the same thing. Modular homes are something entirely different. Those types of homes are regulated by our building codes, and they have to go through the same process as a stick-built home in the county.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other questions for Mr. Anthony? Thank you. Okay. Please call the roll.
An ordinance amending section 405.080B of the Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, to prohibit manufactured mobile homes within residential plats in the A agricultural zoning district. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember? Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill 3945 passes. Next on the agenda is Bill 3946.
Bill Number 3946, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP 7302633, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $558,600 for asphalt overlay within the county limits of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Questions or comments on Bill 3946? Hearing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302633, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $558,600 for asphalt overlay within the county limits of St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 3946 passes. Next, Bill Number 3947.
Bill Number 3947, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302640, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $357,000 to seal roadway with modified micro-surfacing material.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Surface Transportation Program Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302640, with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum amount of $357,000 to seal roadway with modified micro-surfacing material. Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 3947 passes. Next is Bill 3948.
Bill Number 3948, an ordinance authorizing execution of a non-criminal justice agency user agreement for the release of criminal history record information between the Housing Assistance Program of St. Charles County, St. Charles County Housing Authority, and Missouri State Highway Patrol Criminal Justice Information Services Division.
Okay. Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a non-criminal justice agency user agreement for the release of criminal history record information between the Housing Assistance Program of St. Charles County, St. Charles County Housing Authority, and Missouri State Highway Patrol Criminal Justice Information Services Division. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 3948 passes. Next is Bill 3949.
Bill Number 3949, an ordinance authorizing the St. Charles County Sheriff to enter into a search-and-rescue caregiver agreement contract using the CareTrak RISBAN tracking system with qualified St. Charles County residents.
Question or comments? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the St. Charles County Sheriff to enter into a search-and-rescue caregiver agreement contract using the CareTrak RISBAN tracking system with qualified St. Charles County residents. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 3949 passes. Next, Bill 3950.
Bill Number 3950, an ordinance amending the 2013 budget of St. Charles County, Missouri, as adopted by Ordinance 12-096, by appropriating additional revenues in excess of those estimated in the adopted 2013 general fund budget of the Department of Community Health and the Environment.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the 2013 budget of St. Charles County, Missouri, as adopted by Ordinance 12-096, by appropriating additional revenues in excess of those estimated in the adopted 2013 general fund budget of the Department of Community Health and the Environment. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 3950 passes. Next is a substitute bill, 3951.
I will read the original bill as introduced. Bill Number 3951 is an ordinance approving intergovernmental agreements with the Missouri Secretary of State for grants awarded to the Director of Elections in the amount of $49,999 for assistance in meeting the requirements of the Title III of the Help America Vote Act, HAVA, and of $44,117 for assistance in improving and utilizing the Missouri Centralized Voter Registration System, MCBR.
Okay. I believe there is a substitute bill that has been presented. I need a motion to accept the substitute bill, 3951, or at least introduce it.
Motion to introduce substitute bill Number 3951.
I need a second.
May I clarify that you're offering substitute bill 3951 as an amendment to Bill 3951? Was that the motion?
Yes. The, the new darkened type on substitute bill 3951 reads an additional $129,503 for the same purpose.
Second motion.
And then there's also a couple of darkened whereas's that I believe have been added on page two. Do those need to be read?
They do not.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second to replace Bill Number 3951 with substitute bill 3951. Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I have a question for Joanne. Approving this bill, okay, we're not locking in to buying voting machines by approving this bill, we're just saying that we can utilize the state grant money should we decide to?
This has nothing to do with approving the machines, it's a separate bill, it is Bill 3942, and it's on the table. All this does is accept the grants under the terms of the grants.
Agreement. Whether or not we use those grants is still, that will be decided by 3942 eventually.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on substitute bill 3951?
Did you have a motion and a second, sir? Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you do that part in all the favor?
Yes, and we need to do that. All those in favor of substitute bill Number 3951, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, okay. Now, do we need to actually, we need to actually vote on substitute bill 3951?
Right, if we're ready to vote on it, we do. Substitute bill Number 3951, an ordinance approving intergovernmental agreements with the Missouri Secretary of State for grants awarded to the Director of Elections in the amount of $49,999 for assistance in meeting the requirements of the Title III of the Help America Vote Act, HAVA, and additional $129,503 for the same purpose, and $44,117 for assistance in improving and utilizing the Missouri Centralized Voter Registration System, MCBR. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, substitute bill Number 3951 passes. Next would be to bring any tabled bills off the table, which would include Bill Number 3942.
Mr. Chairman, I move to bring Bill 3952 off the table.
Okay, do I have a second?
42.
42.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to bring tabled Bill Number 3942 off the table. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bill Number 3942 is now off the table and open for discussion. Okay. And I believe there's also a substitute bill for this, if I'm...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to substitute, to bring forward substitute bill 3942, which has some changes, predominantly in the dollar amount, instead of $990,366, it is $1,021,685. And then, again, in page two and page three, under the whereas', there are a couple of other changes which you have before you. I would like to make a motion to bring that substitute bill forward and replace tabled Bill 3942 with that.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to replace Bill Number 3942 with substitute bill 3942. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, we now have substitute bill 3942 is now off the table and up for discussion. Mr. Cronin?
I didn't vote for this the first go-around eight months ago, because I did not think that the election authority needed a million dollars' worth of new machines. I still don't think the election authority needs a million dollars' worth of new machines. I have been getting some stuff from, I'm assuming someone in the election department, that basically states that all the machines that we have currently work, okay, except for two. And because we have 160 machines and only 100 and a little over 100 precincts are 60 spare machines of the current machines. The difference between the current machines and the new machines is the way that the ballot is read, one with infrared and one with laser beams, and also the, the new machines have a way that the voter can push a button and actually retrieve the information the machine scanned. I'm not certain that we need that for a million dollars, the county. I am glad that I voted against it the first time, and Mr. Elman vetoed it because it resulted in a $200,000 savings to the county. Since we only have one election for next year, and the current machines we have are both supported by the manufacturer, which I have a letter of that effect, also, the, if you look at the maintenance costs last year, they were approximately $12,000 to keep the current machines growing for another year. I don't see any immediate need that we have this. I agree with what Bob Snir said back in June of last year, he says, "I don't think we need voting machines in the foreseeable future." I still don't think we need, my own opinion is, I still don't think we need them. And a million dollars, even when you're getting some federal grant money, is still a million dollars. So I don't plan on voting for this tonight. I don't see any urgency to doing it. I think we have one election next year, and I think if we wait, we can, we can, you know, possibly get either better technology, or if nothing else, we'll have a year newer machines. Additionally, I was a little disturbed because someone had told me that the poll books that we, that we bought aren't going to be delivered, and the poll books that we bought, the idea was to save money so we wouldn't have to put the blue books on the counters, but I was told that we're not going to have those for the April election, that there's going to be 30 of them that are like samples that are going to be used, but, I mean, that was one of those things, too, we had to get it right away to save money, and it doesn't look like it's working out that way. So, I mean, personally, I've not seen the need for this million-dollar expenditure, and I'm going to vote against it.
Other, other comments, Joe?
As you all know, this has been going on for almost a year. Mr. Krismer was, put this out the bed eight or nine months ago, and the county council, along with finance and administration, made some good points, asked a lot of good questions along with the council, and Mr. Krismer went back to the drawing board and started over. There are some grants and so forth that are in a timeframe with this, with this as well, which has been pointed out to us multiple times. Mr. Krismer is elected by the people of this county. He's elected to run the elections. If he doesn't do a good job, and this is a flop, he just won't get elected again. It's, to me, it's kind of like telling Tom Neary can't have police cars, or he can't have whatever he needs to run his department. If Mr. Krismer did his due diligence, along with finance, they spent a lot of time on this, these machines that they have are seven and a half years old, they have a 10-year life on them, is what we were told. So it takes a lot of time to get these things up and running, over a year. So I'm in favor of it. I think we did our due diligence, I think we did what we needed to do, I think the administration did what they needed to do. Of course, it's hard to swallow spending a million dollars for something like this, but again, it's a little bit different, because Rick is, Richard is elected to this office, he's not a staff member, so I'm going to be in favor of it.
Any other comments? I'd like to just express my opinion. I think, you know, as, as Joe said, this started out more than a year ago. I think the first time around, there were a lot of questions. In my opinion, most all of those questions have been answered. The last, at the last meeting, Mr. Snir pointed out that the, the whole purpose of the delay was to get a competitive bid, a second bid, which, which we got. You know, my fear is that, that the next time around, if we do not approve this, that the next time around, there's, there will be, we'll be going back to have one bid. And that certainly puts us in a difficult situation. Also, the, the grants that are available now, there is a time limit on those, and I know some of those time limits are not until the end of the year, but the point of the matter is, most of these machines would need to be purchased before that, that timeframe anyway. So it's my fear that if we, we reject this, this time around, a year from now, two years from now, or whenever this comes up again, we're going to end up paying, you know, the amount of money that we saved by delaying it this time, I think will, and it's my opinion that we'll, that we have a good chance of losing that amount of money next time it comes up. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of giving Mr. Krismer what he needs to conduct elections that are going to be fair and sound.
Thank you. Mr. Hollander, so far in the, just a couple months I've been on the council, I feel like I've spent most of my time on, on two subjects, this being one, and, and the new towers, communication towers being the other. I've read a tremendous amount about voting machines. I, I think I know now more about voting machines than I ever truly care to, but it is a, a huge responsibility to, to say, yeah, we need to spend a million dollars on, on upgrading technology. And at the end of the day, it's my belief, this isn't something that we can wait until they're truly and finally broke. It, it has to work when it needs to work. I think that, as you guys have already pointed out, it's something that's gone through the process, it's time to get it done, and I, you know, I hate spending a million dollars on, there's a lot more fun things to spend money on, but this is one that needs to get done, and I think that we've done our due diligence on it. I'm prepared to vote in favor of it tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, it's time to call a vote for substitute bill Number 3942.
Substitute bill Number 3942, an ordinance authorizing a bid award to, in a contract with Unison Voting Solutions for an election voting system for use in elections in the amount of $1,021,685. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 3942 passes. Next would be announcements. Anybody that needs to make any announcements. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.